Welcome everybody to the Board of Selectmen's meeting. It is Tuesday, May 7, 2019. It is 9:00 in the morning and we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're not going to sing?
My country, tears of me.
All right, anybody have any additions to the agenda?
Just simply, we're going to deal with some line transfers that came in this morning from the Finance Committee. They weren't on the main agenda because we didn't know they were coming.
Okay. And then we are going to be going over the warrant?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Was everybody able to review the minutes, the executive session minutes for March 12th and May 2nd?
Yep.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll start with a poll hearing. We'll continue the poll hearing. Thank you for coming in. So this poll hearing, here we go. We originally had you in on April 9th. And everything, we sent everything to the abutters. What was it that they were checking on? Was there something?
Well, it was underground or over top. I think their concern was that if you're heading in from the street, whether it's going to be overhead or in bottom, meaning a future building on the property.
Yeah, basically, the planning, Joe Webby.
Oh, hi.
Yeah, the planning board had approved the subdivision with underground.
Okay. And so you're looking for a poll?
I'm not looking for a poll, I'm looking for underground.
So you're looking for underground?
Yeah.
Okay.
The gentleman was supposed to come from Barack, remember?
I know, the young gentleman that was here.
Yeah.
Simon Young.
Yes. So he was going to check into that, wasn't that the case?
Yeah, so that's, I was just rereading the notes.
My thing is a little fogged.
He wouldn't necessarily know.
Right. Here's what.
All he's working with is what the request was.
Okay, so you would like us not to support the poll?
Yeah, my recollection of the hearing was that somebody was going to check with the planning board to see if the subdivision was still in effect. And if it is, which I believe it is, because it was more than good faith, it doesn't expire, then I don't need to. If they're going to go overhead, they have to go back to the planning board and get away from the, that's my thoughts.
Okay, and they're not here to speak to that, so I...
Well, and also, you know, we're fairly sure that the situation is still in existence, since it's still going on because we have accepted it, so.
So you think we should deny the poll at this time until such time we get more relevant information?
Or they can reapply.
All right.
Or they can, as was mentioned, they can go to the planning board and ask them to make the change.
I would move that we, at this time, that we deny the erection of a new poll on Hilldale Lane.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Webby.
Thank you very much for your attention.
All right, Tom, do you want to go ahead and do the payroll warrant and all that stuff?
Sure. I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 96 for $361,047.06. Benda warrant number 97 for $87,482.51. Withholding warrant number 98 for $132,442.35. Ambulance commitment from 4/15/19 to 4/21/19 for $32,731.40. Ambulance commitment from 4/22/19 to 4/...
28.
28/19 for $5,498.43.
I'll second those.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I move to approve, yeah, I move to approve of the following commitment. Mobile home park fee number 5 for $5,160.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we have one road opening, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I move to approve payment of the selectmen's bills dated May 7, 2019. Charles Seelig, I guess this is reimbursement for mailing, $25.50. Vertex Companies, the OPM, $6,922.50. Solitude Lake Management for $1,750. And Paul J. Rogan Company for $49,181.50.
What is that?
That is for the fire suppression system.
All those in favor?
Express Newspapers for $22. Massachusetts Municipal for $75. Beth Israel Deaconess Plymouth, $135. And Occupational Health for $920 for a total of $1,152.
I'll second those.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have a road opening. And it is for a 3x5x3 road cut trench on Dartmouth Street to replace the service line, to relocate the meter. It is approved by the building inspector with the stipulation of having a trench permit. It requires one detail officer, the highway department is okay with it, water and conservation. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I also have a request here for a sign. Right, Charlie? It looks like from the fireworks committee?
Yes, right.
And they would like to put a sign on the town green about their fundraising efforts.
Right, this would be longer, usually we say, you know, a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I was going to say, how long, and they want it now?
They want to get it up now. It won't be up until, I assume, close to June 29th. Basically, part of it is going to be, I assume, something like the thermometer to show how much money they've raised, so they want to continue to encourage people to make their arrangements.
It's really early though, isn't it?
Well, as it is, they're, they actually, in a sense, they're doing this early because they ran so late, in the sense of getting themselves organized this year. So all their fundraising efforts are going to be on a very concentrated period.
I'm moving.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So now we're just going to move into executive session to speak to the police chief about the security of the town and a criminal investigation. And we're also going to come back into public and then we will go back into executive at the end.
Right.
So do I have a motion to go into executive session for those reasons?
So moved. Second.
Tom?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Kim, yes? Thank you. Okay, so we got to do line item?
Or we do line transfers.
Yes, please.
So first one is for $1,000 from treasurer collector wages to treasurer expense. This is due to a new financial advisor and the fee to prepare the continuing disclosure documents for our bonding program. The amounts were higher than anticipated.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Second one is for $3,500 from ambulance billing to ambulance supplies. Our reason is necessary is for the increase in cost for medical supplies.
Do you have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And this is a reserve fund transfer, which we do not need to do because the Finance Committee already handled it.
Okay.
We need signatures on the two line item transfers.
Yes, and then you need to talk to us about the 407 South Street, next.
Yes, just to give you an update, we had, if you remember, that's the place where we foreclosed several months ago. The owner moved out after a few months. We gave them a little bit of latitude to get that done. We now, and we've talked about the idea there was a redemption period of a year, which counsel has advised me that actually technically that's not correct in this case because we did more than what was necessary. However, we decided we were going to let things sit for a year nevertheless. It turns out there are parties, party or parties who are interested in working with the owner to redeem the property in essence, to have the court vacate the foreclosure order. We would get our compensation. We would get back taxes, we would get attorney fees, even things like doing the pest eradication that we just did a few weeks ago at the property. Larry has said very specifically, and I'm in agreement, that basically, we do nothing. It is up to Mr. Gamble and his family and whatever financial supporters he has to take care of everything. Not just financially in the sense of make us the town whole, but we're not going to do any legal work, we're not going to do anything. All we're going to do is at some point say, we are not opposed to the revocation of this order. And that's it. We're not going to get any more involved in it. Now, the board should know that the party, I get, you know, that this ability to go to Mr. Gamble was open to anybody. Joe from California could come into Mr. Gamble and say, hey, you and your family, I hear you, you just got booted out of your property and was foreclosed. I have money. I'm willing to cover all those costs and probably, who knows, maybe a little bit more than that. That's up to the parties. And work with you so that you get your property back, but then you immediately sell it to me. Are you interested in this deal? But anybody could do that. And again, this isn't like an auction for the town or bidding for the town. While we own the property, that arrangement is between Mr. Gamble, his family, and any other party. It's not with us. We don't have, we don't care other than we get compensated for our back taxes and everything else. Reason I'm saying this is that there are town officials or a town official involved in this. Not the board or anybody else here, but simply...
Meow! Sorry.
Somebody may say, well, wait a minute, this is all set up, you know, that the town allowed so-and-so to work with us. Anybody could have worked with Mr. Gamble.
It's no different than him going to a bank and saying, I'm going to pull a loan to cover all my debt and everything else and he changes.
And I understand, and that, you know, if we, if I had brought the property auction, everybody would have a chance at this. In a sense, everybody had a chance with this, obviously, they made a good case. For all I know, maybe this falls through, maybe it doesn't, but what I wanted to do is bring the board up to date about this. Second, to confirm with the board that they're interested in this is let these parties handle everything themselves, we'll just want to oppose the process, but we're not going to put Larry or our Taxile Counselor anything. We're not asking to do anything more than simply, when it comes down to filing motion, we're fine. We're not doing anything.
Yep, that's my opinion.
I'm good with that. All we want is the money.
Yep, okay. So that's my update there.
Okay. And then the last thing before we get into the warrant is the contract up for the small bridge.
Was that Pine Street?
Yes. There is a grant program, small bridge program for this out. If the board would approve having, I didn't even, I'm sorry, I didn't put the stickies in the right places probably, but I think they're fairly familiar for them to have.
Will pump up the ready to sign them?
Yes.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So in this case, we're, yeah, and then there are the certification.
No, it says authorized for in Mass dot.
Yes, but that's us.
Oh, that is.
No, that's us over here.
This is us?
We're the contractor, yes.
Thank you.
And then there are pages in the back, the usual ones, unauthorized, sign on the outside of things.
Yep.
You can go over with Kim to make sure that.
Yep.
And that's to get signed.
I know, Rob.
You sound proud of her.
I am, I am. Completely not knowing.
I went to see Avengers Endgame.
Are you going to spoil it for people who haven't seen it, or do people care about this? By the way, we're on TV, so I think you probably want to.
No, I'm just saying, I went to see it.
Okay, well, don't talk.
Two and a half hours.
Yes.
Charlie went that night?
Yeah, Thursday night, a couple of weeks ago.
He was one of the first ones. Yeah, one of the first peeps.
All right, so then, as soon as I just finish this, then we can...
It's not a good event, you got to make an event.
Can you pass that to me? Thank you.
Let's see if I know.
All right, I think that's all you had before the...
Warrant.
Yeah, the warrant, right? Can you think of anything else?
No.
Okay, all right, cool. Okay, so I kind of already went through this, if that's okay, to, because this is my last time of signing. Is that okay?
But I also would like to...
We're going to go through them?
Yeah, no, but the entire warrant, not just the selectmen articles.
Yes, we're going to do all of them.
Yes, okay.
All 60?
Yes.
I'm not speaking to anything.
No, I know that.
I can do Article 1, which is the opening statement. Does anybody else want to do it, or do you want me to do it?
No.
Well, seeing as it's your last time, I think it's more appropriate that you do it.
Okay.
And the rest of the articles too, for that matter.
So for Article, yeah, so Article 2, we met with the Finance Committee last night. I'm going to put my wage and personnel hat on that's tattered and...
Torn.
Torn, run over. The decision is not to go forward with the study.
So we'll start off with Amendment 1.
Oh, Amendment 1, we will still go forward with the 2%.
And the Finance Committee is recommending that.
Yes.
So Amendment 2 is the list of grade changes.
Yes, so our Section 2, we are not going forward on. There's just...
Too much.
Too much going on, like, you know, we feel confident that the positions are graded appropriately, it's the, and we had looked at all the grades, but it is kind of last minute for the Finance Committee to look at. And again, there was one of the positions that was a bit more controversial than others, was very difficult to really narrow in on a rate. And so we've made the decision to pass over, which should help with the potential of the Australian ballots. Okay, so do you want us to explain everything?
Amendments, Amendments 3 through 22, while they are being proposed by the Wage and Personnel Board, and I believe the Finance Committee is recommending each of them.
Yes, they are, yeah.
They really are generated by me, and I have told Kim that I will, A, do a summary for town meetings, so they'll have a handout there, with the hope that that summary will answer most of the questions, if there are questions, and we can move through these fairly quickly.
Okay, so with the time, because I'm going to be doing all of those, Melinda's going to speak to the 2% and the passover. I, we won't move them in sections?
I don't think so.
Okay, that's fine.
I think the intent is to do them one at a time.
Perfect, okay, all right. So Article 3 is for the salaries for the elected officials. 4 is the operating budget. 5 is the revolving account.
Sandy will have a sheet with any changes from what's printed in the warrant for Article 4.
Yep.
And, yeah, I'm sorry.
It'll be on a different colored paper. So she'll have a copy if the 2% passes, if the 2% does not pass.
Yeah, we are.
Yep. And then any other things that might have been adjusted from the time of the print. Article 5 is the revolving account.
Who's going to do that?
That is, oh, usually it's the Finance Committee.
No, it's from, it's the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, I can do that one. I'll do that one. 7 is the Finance Committee, which is the reserve account.
Well, 6 is the...
6, I'm sorry, 6. And then 7 is me, because it's the firefighters.
And I'll have summaries again for Articles 7 through 12.
Okay.
Available at town meeting, in case people want to know what the changes are in the contracts.
Okay, so 8 I had, it's Tom. 9 I had as Troy. 10 I had as Troy. 11, I could do it, or you could do it, Troy. It's the chief. I kind of was in the middle of that, so it's up to you if you want to present it, you can.
You can present it.
Okay.
More conversations, whatever that I ask.
12 is me, it's the firefighters, I mean, it's Charlie. So 12 is Charlie, just so you're aware, last week I verified, I called all the 10 towns, and I verified the updated salaries that the town administrators have, and he is officially about $35,000 underpaid. So I'll have that data. I'm not going to...
Are you presenting it?
Yes.
Because you said Charlie, so I wrote Charlie.
Oh, no, 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 I am, yeah, Charlie, you got to go up and sing. Sing for your daughter.
After I read that, I'm like, I don't know.
No, I'm sorry. That's Charlie's article, but I'm going to, I'm going to present it.
Okay.
13 would be Troy. It's the Cooperative Extension Services that we typically do. 14 is the Highway Surveyor, that's Chapter 90.
Which we will likely pass over because the legislature has not got any exact together and passed the necessary cooperation.
Yep. Is it okay to go on this side?
I'm fine. I just, I mean, I'm pluing them in in case, you know, all the ordinary.
Article 15 is the Town Roads, what we typically have, and that's the Highway Surveyor. $34,000 is retained earnings for a new truck for the Water Commissioners. We'll present that, because it's a new truck for the Water Department. The next one would be...
17?
Yeah, 17 is the Highway Surveyor, and it's $15,000 to purchase and install cement slabs. I'm going to move Article 18.
Chief, no talk, good.
And then the police chief will speak to it. Yep, so I'll move those because I'm part of capital planning. I'll move 19. I'll move 20.
Just so the board is...
Oh, yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
20 is, the text will be slightly changed in that it's 17 computers, a server, and associated IT equipment and installation costs.
So this is the movement though, the bottom part?
Yes.
Which is, I'm, yeah, the 17 computers you use.
Right, but the article itself, what's in the warrant only talks about 15 new computers.
Yeah, but we're looking at...
Right.
Yes.
The thing is, if I'm right now a resident...
Yes.
I don't know that they're asking for 17 rather than 15.
Okay.
So...
All right.
There's going to be, somebody may, huh, what?
Okay.
That's what's going on.
Okay. So Article 21, I will move and ask for the bulletproof vest. 22, I'll move, that's for the new animal control vehicle. Number 23 is the School Committee, and that's for network switches for their school. 24 is the $36,000, this is a school...
Resource Officer.
Resource Officer, which I believe the Finance Committee does not recommend. I don't recommend the way that it was presented. I do think it should be in the budget, but... Number 25 is $300,000 for the new ambulance. I'll move it, the chief will explain it. Article 26 is for tablets for the voting machines for the town clerk.
No, it's actually new...
Yes.
Voting machines, they're not tablets as in handheld devices. These are new voting machines.
Tabulator bundles, yes. For the town clerk, we'll present that. Article 27 is for the recertification for the assesses department. Tom, I don't know if you'll do that, or if...
I think John's going to do it.
John will do that, okay. Article 28 is a petition article from a resident for the repair on Hayward Street, so we won't move it, we'll see if somebody's there to speak to it.
If, I would appreciate that if for some reason there's some hesitation.
For discussion.
I'll, if I, no, that's not me, is it? No, that's not me. Oh, Charlie, in your judgy ways. You thought it was me?
Yes, I did.
No, I'm sorry. I mean, you judge.
Do not judge, or we be judged.
Okay, so I'll move over, I'll move over. I'll pass over if nobody gets up, pause that.
Okay, what I would recommend is you not pass over it.
Oh.
The reason is this, you get into a situation that the people who are interested in this article then really don't know what they're supposed to do. I would recommend that the board make a motion that's in there to, for the $300,000, I think I've said from chapter 90.
And then I'm, I'll, unless anybody else wants to do it, explain, this is a petition article, it is not brought forward by the Board of Selectmen, or the Highway Surveyor, whoever's here to speak to it should get up and speak.
Yes.
Do you want me to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
That way they have an honest...
Yeah.
Hearing on it.
Yep. Okay, and it would be the same thing for the streetlight, don't you think?
Yes, except I believe Pam, if Andrea Delaney had called and said she was not able to attend the meeting, Pam encouraged her that the other petitioners on, come to town meetings, speak in favor of this. Again, it's a situation where I would ask that the board make the motion. I'm not saying you need to support it, but just so it's out there and the town meeting can make an up or down decision about it.
I can do that one. Article 30, I had written down Tom, it's the $3,500 for the South Coastal Legal Services. The next one, 31, is $3,500 for Social Resource and Advocacy Center. I had Troy, that's the domestic violence one. Article 32 is for post-employment benefits, actuary study for $6,550, and that's the Treasurer Collector's article. The Water Commissioner has Article 33, which is $520,000 for retained earnings to fund a repair replacement of the roofs and chemical storage of all the department, Richmond Water Treatment.
In the Y Camp.
Yes, in the Y Camp, yeah. Article 34 is $75,000 for the new network cabling refresh, and I'll move it, and then Charlie or Caesar will speak to it. Same for Article 35, it's $4,200 for server backup batteries. I'll move it, either Charlie or Caesar will speak to it. Article 36 is $30,000 for a new truck for the Highway Surveyor, that's going to be the Highway Surveyor's article. Article 37 is the $19,500 for traffic light repairs by the Highway Surveyor. Article 38 is $59,500 to replace flooring at the Recycling Center, and that is by the Municipal School Building Committee. Article 39 is $4,600 to replace the flooring at the police station, that is the School Committee and Municipal Committee article. Article 40 is $4,500 to replace the flooring at Pope's Tavern, that is by the Municipal School Building Committee. Article 41 is $12,000 for the new windows that we talked about, and that is also the Municipal School Building Committee. Article 42 is $33,000 for the ADA self-evaluation, that is proposed again by the Municipal.
Though, that's a little confusing since I'm not still sure why it ended up being listed for them, because I'm the person who've done all the previous work.
Oh, okay, so do you want me to move it and then?
Well, and I'm happy, yeah. Somebody's going to need to move it. I'll see if John Campbell gets up very quickly, because my concern simply is that they know much less about this than I do.
Sure, so I'll move it? Well, if I don't see him getting up, I'll move it. If I see him beforehand, I can just say, hey, Article 42, if you want, I'll move, and Charlie just...
Well, you guys can form a duo.
Okay, and then Charlie can speak, okay. Article 43 is for the new telephone system for $5,200. Again, it's by data processing, I'll move it, Charlie or Caesar will explain it. $5,200 for backup for the town's email by data processing, I'll move it, Charlie or Caesar will speak to it. Oh, it's too bad, I wish I could move this one. Article 45 is $51,000 for the Kubota for the Highway Department, the Highway Surveyor is going to speak to it. Actually, I don't want to, because I just like saying that word. Article 46 is $18,000 for fence for the Highway Barn, and that is by the Highway Surveyor. Article 47 is $168,129,000 for a sweeper, which the Finance Committee does not recommend. Article, they also did not recommend the Kubota. Article 48 is $7,500 for, this is one that we typically have. I can move it, because I typically move it and speak to it.
Because many times, for whatever reason, the Conservation Commission isn't very prepared.
They don't show up.
So I can do that. So that's $7,500 to fund that portion of their hours. Article 49 is for the library director, it's $2,345 for new computers for the library. Article 50 is proposed by the Finance Committee, and it is, if we want to put money into stabilization, which I don't expect that we will.
Well, it depends on whether at the end of, this article...
Passes and what doesn't.
Yeah, we may, if this is done...
Before, we have to pull it aside, yeah.
Yeah, we'll table this article, we'll take it off the table once we've done all the appropriations and see if there's any money that we want to move over.
Okay.
And we really should if there is money available, simply because the level of our stabilization fund is below what we would like it to be.
Yep, so Article 50...
So who's going to move that?
Well, that's the Finance Committee's.
Okay.
Yep. Article 51 is the reduction of single-use plastic bags, the Beautification Committee will handle that. They came to the Finance Committee last night, and the Finance Committee voted 3 to 1 to support it. Do we want to take... Do we want to take a stand on it, because I know that, I know that that was something that was asked of our committee by the beautification.
I think it's a good idea, but it always would mean it's the enforcement of it, how do you, how do you force a company not to use plastic bags?
Well, this has some fines that would happen if they should do, if they should not...
There's a written warning system first, and then if they don't pay attention to written warning, then the Highway Surveyor is the head of recycling can start filing.
Yeah, but we, we ban them in town of Halifax, but we can't ban them in the surrounding towns, the plastic bags are still going to come across the board.
Yeah, but it just takes one town, and then another town, and all the towns.
I know, I'm just being devil's advocate here, because that's what's going to be sad.
In that case, Pembroke's done it, Hanson, I think it's on their warrant.
Don Hulse.
I have mixed emotions, I use the bags, I don't throw them outside, but you do see them hanging in the trees, you do see them...
In the ponds, and...
Yeah.
I, I personally support this article, so if you don't want to take a vote, that's fine, I'll speak to it from, as a citizen, to support it, but...
I'll, I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
All right.
Okay, so, okay. Okay, Article 52 is the one that Charlie, I'm going to move it, and this is to do with fees for...
To bring them in, on dog licenses, to bring them into compliance with the state law, now...
Did you decide to...
I would say, I would say, unless the board feels strongly about it, I would pass over this.
Really, because I talked to the town clerk today, and she was totally fine with it.
Well...
It's up to you, if you want to pass over it, that's fine.
Let me put this way, the only reason it's there is because I, I know that we're not in compliance.
Well, then we should keep it.
I'm fine, I mean, I don't, I don't want this to, it is not such a significant thing that I do not want it to poison the waters on other things.
I don't think it would, because if we're in line, then I think we need to just continue, and I, like I said, I talked to the town clerk, she was in support of it, so I'll move it, Charlie explains.
We, do we have any more information on this pile, I mean, the...
We don't, which is why I think you all are going to pass over it, number 53.
Here we go, he hasn't been very forthcoming on this, has he?
So Tom, you're going to pass over that?
Yeah, we're having difficulty getting the information, I mean...
So Tom, do you want to pass over that?
For right now, I'll know better tomorrow.
Do you want to be the one that...
Yeah.
Okay, cool, thank you. And then Article 54 is, this is a petition article, I know the Planning Board is meeting Thursday night.
Right, they will hold the public hearing on all the zoning articles.
Okay, so this is not our article, it's proposed by a citizen, and it is to place marijuana sales in, back in...
The commercial sales would be allowed, marijuana establishments, including cultivation, processing, and retail sales, would be allowed in the commercial district under this change.
Which is the same article that failed last year, but the reason why they can go forward...
Is if the Planning Board agrees to let it go back. You have to take an affirmative vote to allow it to be brought to town meeting, along with whatever recommendation they end up with.
Article 55 is also a petition article, and this is to, I believe this was to move the industrial?
No, what this does is not allow it
Yes.
within 300 feet of any land that's zoned agricultural, residential. In effect, I mean, you'd have to look at the zoning map at parcel by parcel, but in effect, any...
Doesn't it push it out of town?
No, no, see, what happened was when we were, when we had somebody come in that was looking at that property, the blue building on 106, this is the neighborhood behind it that would prevent that from coming in.
Right, so the idea here is that, forgetting about the commercial district for a moment, you'd squeeze the industrial district by 300 feet in all directions, on the assumption that mostly industrial property in town is budding residential. So if it can't be within 300 feet of residential, it effectively puts a 300-foot buffer
Yes.
inside the industrial land. Now, if it's, if the town goes, says yes to 54, but then yes to 55, that also places, again, with the assumption that most of the commercial land in town is zoned right next to residential, would place, would move those boundaries by 300 feet in. In some cases, that means basically a parcel that's zoned commercial would not be allowed to have marijuana, because most of the parcel might be small enough that 300 feet, remember six, so that's 600 feet.
Wiped them out.
Yeah.
Okay, so Article 56 is another marijuana one, and this is proposed by us.
Right, this is a technical change going, if you notice this, Chapter 94H in the definition...
94G in the line.
...to bring it in line with the numbering system for the Mass General laws.
So it's just a clerical change?
Ooh, spooky.
Who's going to present that?
I, I can move it, and then Charlie, can you?
Yeah, I have no problem, that's an easy one. 57, I'm recommending that we pass over, I was in contact with Land Use Council during the last couple of weeks. It would be better probably just to do a complete rewrite of the Senate Bylaw, so...
Do you want me to just pass over it?
Yes, please. I mean, we're still going to have the, the Planning Board having to have the hearing on Thursday, they'll have to make a recommendation, but the initial motion should be still to pass over it.
Okay.
This 58 is controversial, isn't it?
58 is...
It should be, what we're trying to do is, we, when we went through this the first time, you'll see that there's mention of review in the later parts of the paragraph. For some reason, we missed that first renewed. What this does is then ensure that special permits for in-law apartments don't have to be renewed every five years, they just have to be reviewed every five years. So they don't have to go through a hearing process, notice of letters, et cetera. I've been in, you know, I've been talking with Rob about this, I mean, this is sort of a step in the direction, I think we need to have a serious discussion about whether we want to do special permits for in-law apartments anymore. It's not against in-law apartments, but technically what we're permitting is not an apartment.
Yeah.
It's simply an addition.
Addition to some...
Because it's shared living space, there's an open doorway, it's not a separate dwelling.
I don't think we should have anything to do with people's homes and who lives there.
But, we're not there yet, that might be something we bring in next year. But I would recommend, I would ask, again, this is, listen to the Board Selectmen, if the Board Selectmen...
I'll move it, and then you can speak to it. And then 59, we are going to pass over?
I think so, yeah, I mean, I told Joe Pierce that, and she didn't have any particular objection, I mean, she understands we're going to have to, if we're interested in doing this, well, I think the board, whether it's this board or a future board, needs to do is, have a sit-down with Plymouth and say, do we want to move this along?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I understand that, but the board might say, you know what, we don't want to do anything, we're just going to let it sit. I mean, the board's going to have to make a positive action one way or the other.
No, no, I would be positive, Charlie, I'm just sad I'm not going to be in the room.
Well, we could invite you.
Tom, would you like to pass over, or do you want me to?
Um, I'll pass over.
Okay.
I want to warn out.
Just because I know that this was very close to you. Article 60, okay, this is one I get...
These are the controversial ones that I heard, so, that we're going to get some pushback from at least one member, if not more.
Yes, yes.
I've talked to the board about, your board at the Planning Board about this, and whether there's any, if it makes sense to still go ahead with this, and I think, and I think the consensus was, let's wait for the hearing on Thursday, I'll see you on Monday, and we can make a decision on Monday night, before the town meeting, whether to make motions to pass over or not.
Because it's not supported by the Planning Board, for whatever their reasons.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, by you, as I pointed out, there's a discontinuity here in the Bylaw, that basically we have a use that points at use regulations for a particular use, which legally, you know, you can't hang your hat on, but if the Planning Board, in its wisdom, defends this incongruity, it may just make more sense to leave it alone for now.
Well, now I don't have wage and personnel on Thursday, I might be able to come, what time is it on?
It's, I believe it's seven, but you'll have to check.
Yeah, I'll go see.
Good. So that's 1661, so if the board would hold those, somebody would need to make a motion one way or the other.
Yeah, I could do that.
Okay.
I could do 60, and I could do, I could do both 61.
62, the idea here, and we've talked about this in terms of the abandoned housing problem that we have, and abandoned, or lots that had housing where it was torn down. The idea here in Halifax, the way the Bylaw's set up right now in Halifax, is that if you abandon the use for more than two years, whether or not the house comes down or not, you can no go, you cannot go back and rebuild on that parcel. We could sell it, you know, and we have parcels that have gone through foreclosure, that we own, or parcels that may be going into foreclosure, that we'll end up owning in this circumstance. The idea here is that we would be able to then have the parcel redeveloped. They still might need variances and everything like that, because many times these are going to be smaller lots. But what it does is, instead of setting it up that the only thing you can use it for is vacant land, it allows redevelopment of that parcel.
Okay, now, let's move on to the specials.
So the board, so the...
I'll move it, and then you're going to explain it.
Yeah.
Okay, Article 1 of the, that's proposed by the Treasure Collector, and it's simply to move money from veterans' benefits and snow and ice to group insurance.
Right, and the reason for that is because we had more people signing up for the town's health insurance than anticipated.
Oh, wait, okay, I was reading it wrong, all I could see was veteran benefits.
So Article 2 is proposed by us, and it's to move $20,000 into our law account?
Right, which I'm hoping is going to cover May and June, we'll see.
Yeah.
My doubts right now. I just, I was able to get another $10,000 from the Finance Committee last night to pay April bills, I still have one bill outstanding, I haven't gotten one for a couple-minute page.
Okay, do you want me to move it, does anybody want to move it? Do you want me to move it? I'll just...
And I will have a...
Do you want me to? Do you want to?
Unless the board tells me otherwise, I already, I already have posted all of the expenses under law, basically, I think I listed about eight different categories, including the two major land use cases, and along with watering grievances, as separate amounts that we've been spending, and that was as of March 31st. I can do it again if the board would like, as of April 30th.
Yeah, could I, yeah.
But I, do you want me to get that out as a handout, or do you want...
Do you want me to move, what do you guys think?
I'd take an explanation to do it.
Then I'll have it laid out, we won't have to read it. I mean, the article we'll have to read, but we don't have to go line by line and say, we spent this much on this, this much, I'll have the handout at town meeting.
Okay, so you're going to do a handout, so do you want me to, like, move it?
Well, no.
And I'll explain it?
That's fine.
And just say, you have a handout?
Yeah. Okay. Showing the amounts that have been spent as of April 30th.
Yeah.
And we have two more months.
Yep. Town Clerk is Article 3, and that is to, she's, we've had more elections and...
Oh, town meetings.
Town meetings, I'm sorry. $2,500 is being transferred into that account from heating and oil. Article 4 is the Board of Selectmen, and I wrote Tom, because I know you love the cable. Unless Troy wants to...
What's pegged?
Public access.
Public access.
It's the public education and government.
Oh, okay.
Those are the three channels, was it 13, 14, 15, or was it 15, 16, 17?
13, 14, 15.
Okay, Article 5 is the Halifax Elementary School, and that's to repair their HVAC in that cafeteria.
And that's going to be in the, I think Sandy said something like 42, 44,000, but they'll be getting it from their own funds.
Yep, and the Finance Committee's recommended it. Article 6 is being moved, it's by the Historical, and their electric bill is higher than I thought it was going to be.
Because they've been running a dehumidifier in the cellar, because...
With the moisture.
Right. And they had, I mean, their bill was this much previous to that, and then it got this big, and they didn't budget for that big.
Article 7 is the Board of Selectmen, I don't know, Troy, do you want to do that one, it's the heating and oil being moved to data processing.
And the reason for that is because we had work that we needed to do over the council aging that we didn't anticipate.
I'll do it.
Nine is proposed...
Eight is the asbestos article for $1,500, we'll be doing testing in the basement of this section of the building, it's not to encapsulate, or I think it's simply to test it. We're doing this because the company that's going to do the network cabling in the building, so we think there may be asbestos there, and we want it tested before we go down there ourselves.
And this is proposed by the Municipal School Committee meeting. The next one, Article 9, is transfer of 5285 to solid, from solid waste to the reserve fund.
Right, they took money from the reserve fund for emergency expenditure, they're putting money back in for retained earnings to cover that.
Article 10 is $4,000 to be moved into town reports.
And that, I mean...
That's because, are we going to double-check on the amount?
Yeah, it's around there, one way or the other, but it's because we had, along with the election, the expenses the town clerk had for running town meetings, then we also had to post, publish and mail out the warrants for the specials.
Okay, do you want me just to move it, I'll move it, or Troy?
I can look at it.
Troy, okay. Article 11 is for an unpaid bill for $600 for terminal exchange. Charlie, anybody want to move it? I'm happy to.
Well, I don't mind.
Tom, okay, so Tom, you'll do Article 11. And then Article 12 is unpaid bill from Health Express for $400. Do you want me to move it?
Yes, somebody needs to move it.
I'll move that, too.
Tom, okay.
I'll move the non-controversial ones.
Okay.
In other words, you're not moving anything at a town meeting.
That's pretty much it.
Okay.
We need to go back and exec.
Yes, to discuss...
Police Chief's contract.
Sergeants, patrol officers, highway, cemetery, firefighters, police chief, town administrator, we will not be coming back into public session.
Because discussions of these, of the contract negotiations would be detrimental to the town's position.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Tom?
You can pick.
Okay, Tom?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Kim, yes. Thank you, everybody, see you at town meeting.
Yes.